Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm calling the meeting to order, ask everybody to please silence your electronic devices, and boy, everybody came out to watch Jamie Devey get Employee of the Year. Well, yeah. That's wonderful, that's wonderful. We have an overflow tent out here, Jamie, for everybody else? That's terrific. So, thank you, everybody. It's nice to see everybody at our council meeting. A lot of times, it's just us and the employees, so it's great to see everybody out. I do like to tell you, because I'll forget as this goes on, as your item is heard, once you've gotten your proclamation or done, I do want you to know that there's no etiquette responsibility for you to stick around for the whole meeting. You're welcome, we'd love to have you, but I don't, people sometimes feel awkward about walking out after their business is concluded, but don't. It's okay, we're used to that, and it's fine. So, you're welcome to stay, but don't feel compelled to, all right? So, I've already asked you to silence your electronic devices, and if you would, please stand and join us in the invocation and the pledge. Lord, we come before you tonight in gratitude for your many blessings. We know that you are the source of all that is good, and we ask you to help us never take your blessings for granted. We pray for all those throughout the world who are suffering from war, poverty, or oppression. May they feel your presence, and may you grant them your peace. We thank you, as always, for our wonderful staff, and ask your continued blessings upon them and their families. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, we have a tradition here in Temple Terrace whereby we start our council meetings with a fun or interesting fact concerning the city or our region, and we rotate that duty. And as time goes on, it gets harder and harder, because we've exhausted everything about orange trees and, right? So, it gets harder, and tonight, that duty falls upon Councilmember Fernandez, whose idea this was. So, let's see what she comes up with tonight.
Okay. Welcome, everybody. And so, I'd like to start with a little bit of history about Florida College. For those of you who don't realize, we have a small, private college within the city of Temple Terrace. And while they originally came and purchased buildings that were formerly owned by the city of Temple Terrace, they were, they, names changed, and different things happened, and they were actually accredited in 1954. And they started to see a lot of growth in the 60s, as they changed their name again and changed their recruitment process. So, they did a lot of building and remodeling of their existing buildings. And one of the buildings I want to talk about is Hutchinson Auditorium. And any of you who drive past Florida College, you might notice, it's a very peaked building that is a little bit unusual for what you're expecting considering their previous buildings. So, that building is, it's the Hutchinson Auditorium, and it is a mid-century modern building, built in 1961. And the cost to construct this building was $100,000, which is a pretty good investment for a small college. And the architect was Gary A. Boyle, a Tampa resident, and the contractor was Paul Smith Construction. And the building is named for the family that provided a significant portion of the funds to construct the building. So, that's consistent with what we do today. You pay for the building, and we'll put your name on it. But this is a really important building to the school, because it is the place that the students come for chapel. They have all of their student body assemblies there. It fits the entire student body, although those of you, if you had gone to the opening this year in August, when they opened the school year, you would see it was a very tight fit, because their student body has grown so much. And it's also the place where most of their major theater productions or other fine arts performances are held. So, it's one of their most utilized buildings on campus. And I think if you, Mary, if you could put up the picture when it's under construction, the first one. I have a couple pictures. So, this picture, I don't think a lot of people have ever seen. This is when it was under construction on the campus, and this Florida College personnel sent that one to me. And then, now can you put up the final, the finished product? And it went from that to this. And one of the things that visitors to the campus, they all reflect on how iconic the architecture is, and what an unusual design, and how it represents the mid-century modern architecture. And it's something that I know about, because Gary A. Boyle is my grandfather. And he attended Georgia Tech and the Fontainebleau School of Fine Arts in Paris, and he settled in Tampa, Florida, after being in the Army Corps of Engineers in World War II. So, he worked around this area, and this is one of the buildings that he designed in the area. He also designed some buildings at St. Leo College as well. So, it's an important building for me, just because of the family history, and I wanted to tell the public about this building. And I also want to let you know, can you put up the, okay. The Temple Terrace Women's Club, in the past, has actually had commemorative ornaments, and they commemorated some of the iconic buildings in the city of Temple Terrace. And I don't know today if the club has any of these ornaments left, but I know you can buy them online from people who are selling them. But this is the ornament that they created for the Hutchinson Auditorium, to commemorate that building. And it is one of the oldest buildings surviving on the Florida College campus right now. And I do know that it is scheduled to be remodeled or enlarged in some capacity, because their student body has grown, and they need the seating. So, I don't know what it will look like in the future, but I know what it looks like now, and that is my fun fact for today.
Well, thank you, that was great. Thank you very much. Yeah. That was very, very interesting. Thank you. So, now, this is the highlight of the, well, my opinion, the highlight of the meeting, and that is, we get to recognize our 2025 Employee of the Year. And before I call her up, I want to tell you that this is no easy task in Temple Terrace. We restructured our awards a while back, so that the Employee of the Months are chosen by their peer employees, so the management has little to do with this. These are peer employees that self-select an Employee of the Month, and then the Employee of the Year is selected from among those 12 Employees of the Month. And so, that has made the bar considerably higher, because we have a really, a ton of really terrific people working here. And so, to get selected for Employee of the Month is a huge honor, and to get selected Employee of the Year is really, really special. So, Jamie Devey, would you please come to the podium? You can knight her whenever you want, there, Jennifer.
Jeez. Possibly. Oh, my God.
Yeah. They asked me to do that, I said, "We better get somebody else to do that."
Jamie Barlow thought that it would match her personality very well.
It does.
She needed to have some length.
Those of us who know her will know that it does. So, whereas the success of the city of Temple Terrace is built upon the tireless efforts and exceptional dedication of its employees, whereas, a city's finance department is crucial for sound financial management, accountability, and operational efficiency through handling all financial aspects like accounting, budgeting, payroll. The finance department, Finance Operations Manager Jamie Devey, has demonstrated outstanding performance on wavering commitment and exemplary work ethic and willingness to help her fellow coworkers. Jamie is skilled in turning theory into action by organizing her thoughts and outside information into actionable goals and processes. Jamie has been crucial in creating processes and procedures in payroll, revising a city ordinance for business tax receipts, and creating the database for new software, for a new software program, selecting a cloud-based vendor and a payee onboarding and management platform to help streamline and secure vendor information, troubleshooting the city's current integrated management system and assisting in the selection of a new system, and working with the city's grant administrator to process the city's grants, particularly FEMA, in order to achieve maximum reimbursement. Jamie is highly regarded by her colleagues for her knowledge and integrity, and is always willing and available to lend her professional expertise in resolving any problems and doing what is needed to finish a project. Not only does Jamie have a wealth of financial knowledge, but her many other talents include event planning, and when asked, she is always willing to help out with any city event, from initial concept to final execution. Despite the demands of her position, Jamie always displays a friendly and approachable nature, which has made her a pleasure to work with and has endeared her to her colleagues. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim Jamie Devey as 2025 City of Temple Terrace Employee of the Year. Would you like to say a few words?
If I can keep my emotions?
Are you able to say a few words?
Mayor Ross, City Council, all of my colleagues, my friends, my family, I'm really deeply honored, and just truly moved to even have been nominated, but then to be selected as Employee of the Year. We have so many different employees here that really go above and beyond their call of duty, all the time. It's amazing, and this award, it's not just for me. I have an amazing team behind me. They have all come to support me, they all stayed late on their own time to show their appreciation and their support, and that is huge. Many of you know where we came from as a team, and this team really has a lot of rock stars in it, and I couldn't do what I do each day without all of them. I do need to say a thank you to my husband. Thank you for being there, so that I can be here. He's always there when I get pulled away from work. He knows what it is to be a public servant, and he stepped back and allowed me to be a public servant now, and so that I can shine. And I truly thank you. To all of our teammates, all of our colleagues, all of the directors. Carlos, you have been such a ray of sunshine for this city. You are taking us in a positive direction, you're taking us into the future, when we were stagnant for a long time. Thank you for all that you've supported and done. My managers, Jennifer and Tony especially, for always keeping me grounded and keeping me in check when I need to be. Thank you, guys, all. I live here, I work here, I play here. This is, City of Temple Terrace is my favorite place to be, and I really thank you all for this wonderful honor. And the city is great and getting better every day, so thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, a little bit more this way. All right, three, two, one. Thank you.
Your family. Family, come on, host me.
Mom made it, right?
Mary?
Okay, finance team.
Jamie? All right, three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is, we have, I'll call Michelle Spanion, Vice President of Friends of the Library, to the podium, please, for a proclamation.
Good evening. Hello.
How are you?
I'm great.
Good, good, thanks for being here.
Thank you, it's my pleasure.
So, we have a proclamation for National Friends of the Library Week, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas, Friends of the Temple Terrace Public Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. The work of the Friends of the Friends highlights an ongoing, on an ongoing basis, the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to present. The Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers' advisory, and children's services. The Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby set aside the week of October 19th through 25th, for 25th, 2025, as Friends of the Library Week. And so, thank you for being here to receive this, and thank you for all you do. Would you like to say a few words?
Just come support the library, come support the Friends, the book nooks always open, and we have a book sale in November, so come help us raise money.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all your team for all you do.
Thank you so much.
Very much appreciated. We have our Friends here from the Rotary Club of Temple Terrace, who do so much for us, and if you guys would like to come, up to the podium, please. Whoever's designated, there we go. You're coming, okay. This is Rachel Palowski, who is here to receive the proclamation, which reads, "Rotary is a global network of 1.2 billion, million neighbors," not billion, you probably wish you had 1.2 billion, "1.2 million neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. The Rotary motto, 'Service Above Self,' inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. Rotary, in 1985, launched Polio Plus, and in 1988, helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize the children of the world against polio. Polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. To date, Rotary has contributed more than $1.9 billion in countless volunteer hours to protect more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries. Rotary is working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which would be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. These efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. In addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $8 billion to the effort. There are over 1,600 Rotary members in more than 35 clubs throughout District 6890 that sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in their local communities and abroad. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2025, as World Polio Day." And so, Ms. Palowski, would you like to say a few words?
I'd just like to thank all of you guys for supporting us. Without your support, we couldn't do what we do, so thank all of you. We love being in Temple Terrace, like everybody else has said. We all live here, we play here, we work here, so thank you, guys. We have one of our members who has, over the past few years, done several cross-country bike rides. He, so far, this year, he rode the Mississippi River this year, and is just shy of $12,000 that he's raised so far for that ride. Over the culmination of those five rides, is just shy of $100,000 with the Gates Foundation match, so we're hoping to get over that $2,000 threshold and meet that $100,000 match, or $100,000 mark by the end of this year. We'd like to invite anybody to come join us. You don't have to be a member to come join us at our meetings. We meet every Tuesday at Chicken Salad Chicks on Fowler Avenue, and guests that join us, your first lunch is on us, so we'd love to see you. That's about it.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Palowski.
Thank you.
Get your dad up here. Get him up here.
How we doing, Mary?
We're very, like, a lot on this side. Thank you.
Just giving them a quick second to get out, so you're not trying to talk over everybody. So, next up, we have a Centennial Committee update. The Centennial Committee is the committee that we established a couple of years ago to help us celebrate our 100-year anniversary, all during 2025, and our update tonight will be from Nancy Hudson, who is our Chair of our Centennial Committee. So, welcome, Ms. Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor Ross, council members, good evening. We just wanted to give you a quick update. We're heading into the last quarter of our year, and we just wanted to kind of remind you what we've done and tell you about what's upcoming for the last few months of the year. We had a great summer for Centennial. We did have the River Jam, and we had Paws in the Park, and of course, the beautiful murals that we have all over the city now are all completed. We have had dedications and ribbon cuttings for those. And speaking of that, we have another one coming on November 15th. We'll be dedicating the one at the Lightfoot Center, which was painted by Amina Khan and the community, so we hope that you all will come out there. We appreciate all the support that you've given us at our other activities, so we hope we'll see you all there. That mural is entitled Views of the Terrace, and it was sponsored by the Temple Terrace Arts Council. And while I'm here, I'd also just like to thank the other sponsors for the murals, which included Tico, the Temple Terrace Women's Club, and the Temple Terrace Rotary Club. And of course, we sold lots of t-shirts and lots of flags, so that also helped us with a lot of the enhancements that you saw to the community activities overall. We did use that funding to also help us, and that's also helped us extend some of the activities into this last quarter. The school integration continues. We were able to buy a banner for each of the five Temple Terrace Public Schools that they have and can display anywhere in the school, so that all the students can celebrate Centennial with us and learn more about the community. They all have activities planned as well. There's two actually on Friday for two of the schools, where they'll be doing activities that support, again, the Centennial. We have the Fall Festival coming on October 25th, which will be enhanced, and of course, the Arts Festival, which is coming on November 8th and 9th. And added to that this year, we are adding a concert on the Saturday night. We're actually going to twist the stage around to face the golf course, and we'll actually be having two bands, the Danny Mooney Band and the American Souvenir Band, which are our local favorites, so it'll just be like additional, adding on to what we always know that's such a great that's such a great time of year, it's such a great event for our city, so we'll have the concert at the end of the evening this year, which will be super special. Winter Wonderland, of course, is coming. Enhancements there will be something super special at the end of the parade that we know everyone will enjoy, and we're also having fireworks this year, again, supported by the funding that we received from the Centennial Committee. Lots of other things that the committee already does, the Recreation Center already participates in, so you'll see those continue to happen. I just, if you have any questions for us or anything else that you'd like to know, but we want to thank you very much. The committee has enjoyed, this is a three-year journey that we've been working on for everybody, and we appreciate all your support and just letting us be involved in the committee and being on the whole group, really appreciates being part of the community.
Council members, any questions?
Thank you, Nancy.
Of course.
Thank you for all the effort you put in. It's really lovely. I have a question, since you mentioned the funding you received from the Centennial Committee. Last, I remember discussing this, there were about $130,000 in that fund, so several, several ones.
How's that, better? Okay, so first of all, thank you very much for the report and for all the work that you've put in. It is appreciated. Coming back to the comment you made about the funding, last we discussed it, which was several months ago, there were about $130,000 remaining, and I was just curious if you had a current fund balance?
I don't have a current fund balance, but our plan is to spend it all. I'm sure there wasn't 130 left three months ago, because a good portion of that had been spent. That would be the total amount that we received from the council, as well as the sponsorships that we received, which we earned ourselves, but the entire fund will be spent by the end of the year.
Okay, is it already committed?
Yes, it's committed. That's why I think I'm here today to share these items, because that's where it's committed to.
If you received additional funding, do you think it would be possible for you to do something to activate the downtown area at this point, talking about specifically the property next to the Starbucks, where it might be nice to do an open-air event coming into the later years?
Happy to, you know, we still have meetings, we still meet once a month, happy to bring it back to the committee and come up with options, but, you know, I hadn't been aware of anything like that until now, but I'm happy to look at it.
No, you shouldn't be aware of it. It's not anything that you should be aware of, it's just something I'm asking about. Since we're going into the cooler months now, I thought it might be nice to use that space, because we do want downtown to become a focal point for cultural affairs, so thank you very much for that, and I'll give it a think, and knowing that you've committed all the funds, that sets me in the right frame of mind to think about what that event might be like, so thank you for the information. That's all I yield the floor.
Just to clarify, Ms. Hudson, don't start planning an event until the council asks you to do that, the whole council.
Understood, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
So, through this process, I know you've talked to a lot of people in the community, and I just wondered what interesting stories you got from long-term residents and what things that you learned about the city that we might be able to make a little more, we might be able to make a presentation about, or maybe take some of what you learned and put it on our TV channel, or the YouTube, or something like that, so that we could show it out to the larger public?
Marissa, will you help, please? So, that was, on our committee, we all had sort of specialty things that we focused on, so Marissa's done a really good job. She's responsible for a lot of the information that's on the timeline and gathering all the things, and people were very generous. We got a lot of photos and stories and other things that people gave to us once they knew we were on the committee, but I'll let Marissa speak to that more specifically.
So, we did have, hi, Marissa Robinson, we did have a few residents come up and tell some stories. One was Karen McAluso, which I'm sure a few of you are familiar with. She actually used to work for Cody Fowler at his law office, and it's something that we're also starting to look into, is doing some oral histories and having those recorded, so we'll be hopefully starting to work on those within the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, appreciate all the work of all the committee members, thanks for being here. So, council, there's one board appointment tonight for a school support committee appointment. There's one vacancy on the school support committee, and we received one application from Christina Paul. I do not see Ms. Paul here tonight, okay. Is there a motion to approve the appointment?
Move to approve the appointment of Christina Paul to the School Support Committee for the date of September 6, 2025, to September 6, 2028.
Motion is second, discussion of the appointment. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. Ms. Paul, if you're watching, thank you for your service. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of our September 16 council meeting, and if so, is there a motion?
To approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion or amendments to the minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays, minutes are adopted. Next section of the meeting, are persons wishing to be heard on items on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda? And I currently have a couple of requests to speak. First one is Mr. Loeb. Mr. Loeb? I failed to mention, if you're new to this, you have three minutes per speaker, and we do ask that you start with your name and city of residence.
Charles Loeb, Terrace Park, and first, before anything else, I want to thank the city for all the work they do, but particularly over the Senior Expo and National Night App. I also want to thank the church for that very nice event on Saturday, the international presentation. I call it bridging that gap, because one of the theme I want to talk about is bridge the gap. Bridge the gap is between citizens and the people that serve them, not so much you all as it is government people on higher levels of government, for example, which would have to do with not only citizens, but you all as well. I'll give you a couple for instances. Number one, it would be, let's suppose that an aide from a councilwoman, I mean Congresswoman, Lee's office would come over here. You could ask her if they could find money for you for the PFAS fund, that could help you pay for that. Another example would be of a non-elected official, but a bureaucrat, would be from the FEMA associate, would be from FEMA. In North Miami Beach, we had a very successful program, having to do with when Wilma and our little brush with Katrina was through 20 years ago. A lot of businesses got AIDS, got aid, but did not expect to, and also, a lot of corruption was stopped. Over, the program was so successful, the guy who was the head of the program, I was told, came all the way back from Washington State to do it, to continue the program after Christmas. So, as my mother used to say, if you don't ask, you're not going to get, and all they're going to, all they can say if they don't want to help you is no. That is unless you have any false hope on it, but nonetheless, if you don't want to have help, all you have to do is not ask, and this way you won't get it. But it is important to bridge the gap between citizens and higher levels of government. There are various formats that could be done. One that I like is coming, having someone come regularly to the city council meetings and talk about themselves a little bit, how to get in contact with them and what they do, and that would go for not only, that would not only go for elected officials, but also for people who are within the bureaucracy. I do think by next year this time, that there would be a lot of people wanting to be involved with people at events that are over here because of the fact they're going to want votes, either incumbents or candidates, to people that are already come, so I do want to, I do hope we can get into this a little bit, this bridge-the-gap program, and help, and hopefully serve the citizens better in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Next up is Dr., I'm having trouble, is it Malima? Yes, Dr. Malima. I was hoping I got that close to being right.
Very good, thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you, yes, I am Dr. Rissasi Malima. I have been in Temple Terrace for over 25 years, and so it is not going to notice that in that time, 20% of the population in Temple Terrace is people of African descent in that 25 years. I've also noticed that the police department seems to be the only department in the city that shows a representation. In fact, they've grown, tripled in the 25 years that I have been in Temple Terrace. Went from two to, I think you now have seven, police officers of African descent. To that end, you have a new complex going up, starting called Enigma. If you look up what the definition of Enigma is, it's that of mystery or even secret. I would like to know the process of renaming Enigma to Black Lives Matter Plaza. Is there a process? Is that something that the council votes on? Is that a Department of Transportation issue? Do I need to start a petition? Tell me the process so that we can get it going, and since I have witnessed the proclamation, I see that heritage and honoring and dignity and respect seems to be something that the council endorses by the numerous proclamations that were done this evening, so I would like to know where that 20% of the population of Temple Terrace has representation and recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. I don't have a person, I have an organization on the next request to speak, so I'm not sure who to call up, because I don't have a person, so whoever's going to come up, could you come up, please? There we go. And I also see that there are two people ceding time.
Just one.
Just one, so...
We have one in case the other one is running late.
What, which one are you, ma'am?
That's Rebecca Parker.
Rebecca Parker, okay, and one other person is ceding the time, ceding time to her.
Yes.
And that's, and you're Ms. Kay. Okay, we're good then. So, Ms. Parker, we just need you to start with your name and city of residence, and then you have four minutes, so, okay?
All right.
All right.
Well, good evening, my name is Rebecca Parker, I reside in Riverview, Florida. I am also the chapter member, or the chapter president, of the notable New Uppsala Zeta Chapter that is founded here in Temple Terrace. So, good evening, sorry, Mayor Ross, council members, and guests. On behalf of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated and the New Uppsala Zeta Chapter, I bring you greetings rooted in sisterhood, service, scholarship, and finer womanhood. Founded on January 16, 1920, on the campus of Howard University, Zeta Phi Beta was built on a vision of community-conscious, action-oriented service, a vision that has endured for over 105 years. Today, our chapter, New Uppsala Zeta, continues that proud tradition here in Temple Terrace, Florida, and greater Tampa Bay area, working hand-in-hand with local leaders, schools, and organizations to strengthen our community through purposeful service. Our initiatives focus on education, health, civic engagement, and youth development. Through our youth auxiliaries, we mentor elementary, middle, and high school girls, instilling confidence, leadership, and self-respect. Through our partnerships, we've hosted literacy drives, women's wellness workshops, and family support programs, all designed to make a measurable difference in the lives of those we serve. We understand that strong communities are built through collaboration, and that's why we are so honored to be here tonight, to acknowledge the important work of the council and to express our willingness to continue serving alongside you. Whether through volunteerism, civic engagement, or community events, New Uppsala Zeta remains committed to being a partner in progress for the City of Temple Terrace. We extend our sincere appreciation to the mayor and council members for your leadership and for your continued efforts to ensure that Temple Terrace remains a vibrant, inclusive, and thriving community. So, again, on behalf of the notable New Uppsala Zeta Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, thank you for welcoming us into the space and for all that you do to uplift our city. Together, we will continue to move forward in service, unity, and in excellence.
Thank you, Ms. Parker, and thank you for joining us. Those are all the requests I have for public comment. Council, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I believe there are other people who wish to speak. I'm a little bit surprised, have the forms not been submitted properly, or?
That's all the requests.
I think if you asked for a show of hands, there are still people here who want to speak.
Well, there's some for agenda items.
You can speak on public comment and on the agenda item if you wish. Okay, is that, that's all the requests? I'm surprised.
That's all the requests. Council, is there a request, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I don't, I don't think we've fully exhausted the public comment. I don't think the public comment section is properly closed, either.
If we're going to reinvent the council rules, it would be nice to tell the rest of us. Sir, when you get done speaking, would you please fill out a form in the back of the room and give it to the clerk?
Oh, I completed a form, yes, Benny Harris.
I'm sorry?
Benny Harris.
I do not have a form from you, but that's okay, we'll allow you, but we do have a motion to dispose of here, so the consent agenda is approved. Now, we will go back, and we'll be happy to hear your public comments, sir.
Okay, yes, my name is Benny Harris, I reside at 5209 Chillicothe Street, Temple Terrace, Florida, 33617. Thank you, Mayor Ross and the council, for letting me speak a few minutes. Anyway, I was here probably a little bit over a year ago, going on two years ago, regarding a garage expansion. Basically, the situation that I'm in now is that I live in a house that was actually built in '72. The garage is actually a separate detached garage, and at the time that it was built, three months, three months afterwards, they changed the roof, so I actually have a legal, non-conforming garage. I've been wanting to expand my garage, I actually have 24 feet of property between the garage, the block wall of the garage, to the property line, and I actually wanted to expand it. However, there's a zoning restrictions, I was going to try to build a breezeway to attach the house to the garage, but anyway, I had a couple of the development members come out to the house, Mr. Pauley and Ms. Robertson, they were kind enough to come out and actually see the property, and I believe what I'm actually running into and everything is that it's a problem, it's with the zoning restrictions, you know. I think it's not just for me, if I'm running into this particular problem, trying to expand my garage, you know, like it's legal, non-conforming property and structure and everything, I believe that other people are having problems as well, and basically, what I would like to see is that, as of now, I cannot move forward with the expansion, I'm actually at a standstill, because of, which I would see it as centralized planning, you know, it seems like it's one size fits all, and that's not always the case, and they actually want to consider joining the house to the garage, whatever, which is not feasible, you're looking at a lot of tremendous costs, re-engineering, you know, redesigning as well, because of the bedroom, that's actually on the west-east end of the house, and then also on the garage, and so they want to actually join the house to the garage, and you have to ask yourself, okay, well, just when you're doing addition, you want to say, well, does it look, does that part of the building, you know, when you're adding to it, does it look like it belonged there, or is it going to look awkward? And so, now, it seems like, you know, like, it seems like this, the zoning restrictions and everything, I don't have a problem with zoning and everything, but I think when the committee or the zoning committee, they consider doing, making changes to the zoning restrictions or the zoning rules or whatever, they need to consider, you know, like, each person, you know, like, that owns a house here in Temple Terrace, we're all in the different boats, you know, like, we don't all fit in that one cookie cutter box that centralized planning has kind of like boxes in, and so now, I'm boxed in and I cannot move forward, so I would like to ask the zoning committee, or whoever does the zoning restrictions or whatever, to consider whenever a resident wants to expand or do some property changes or whatever, to consider it on an individual basis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, apologize for the mix-up, and we will have a staff member follow up with you on this, so...
All right, thank you. All right, have a blessed day.
Appreciate your patience.
Chair may I be recognized?
Councilmember Cravitz?
Thank you. Just on the point of council rules, I wanted to quote from Rule 19A, excuse me, B, which is, "A council member wishing to speak shall address the chair, be recognized by the chair, and shall confine remarks to the question or issue under debate," which was at that point in time, public comment. And then I'd also like to point out Rule 18D, which says, "The chair shall recognize a citizen who wants to address the council. The citizen shall state his/her name and city of residence, et cetera, et cetera." So, from my perspective, what just happened was, we rushed through the end of public comment, even though there were still people who wished to be given the opportunity to speak, and a vote was held, even though I had asked for the floor to address a point under public comment, which had not yet closed yet, that vote was then taken, I did not have an opportunity to vote on it, so you all passed the consent agenda 4-0, which I suppose is fine, but in my opinion, what just happened was not in conformity with the council rules, which I've just read, and so, I'm not inventing anything, I'm just saying, there are people here who wish to speak, and I think it's appropriate to recognize them, so that was the only point that I was trying to make earlier. Thank you, I yield the floor.
Okay. Next item is a resolution approving the purchase of three 2026 Ford Interceptor Police Patrol Utility Vehicles. Captain Jacob Carlisle from the Police Department is here to explain. Captain Jacob Carlyle from the Police Department is here to explain.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Jacob Carlyle, your police department. As part of the Police Department's Vehicle Replacement Program, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars was included in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six Community Investment Tax Fund Budget for the purchase of three police patrol vehicles. The purchase of the three marked patrol vehicles will be made from Barto Ford of Barto, Florida, under Pasco County Contract Bid Number IFBRR21042. The vehicles will be purchased at a cost of one hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and nine cents. The payment for the patrol vehicles will be made from account one-six-zero-one-four-two-one five-two-one point-six-four dash one-one. The over-budget amount of four thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty dollars and nine cents funded through CIT reserves. The prices have been verified with the contract and bid award reference therein and included the purchase of emergency lights, vinyl graphics and other necessary equipment to mark and outfit the vehicles. Once the new vehicles have been placed into service, existing patrol vehicles previously identified as needing replacement will be processed for disposal and sold at auction in accordance with operational needs and current City of Temple Terrace procedures. I stand for questioning.
Thank you, Captain. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Mr. Loeb?
Yeah, very quickly. Uh, Charles Loeb, the only thing I wanna comment on is in the light print, it says twenty-twenty-five Ford Interceptor Police Vehicles, but in the dark print it says three-twenty-twenty-four Ford Police Interceptor Vehicles. Have you noticed that on the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Are there other members of the public? Are there other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, Captain? Clarify the year...
Certainly, it was a clear error, twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-four, and it was actually twenty-five was what we originally quoted, and the vehicles are twenty-twenty-sixes.
Okay, so what we're, the resolution will say that we're purchasing twenty-twenty-six?
Correct.
Councilmembers' questions? Okay, seeing no questions, is there a motion?
To approve the purchase of three twenty-twenty-six Ford, twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-six Ford Interceptor Police Patrol Utility Vehicles. Back it.
Discussion of the motion. Not all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? No nays, resolution is adopted. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Next is a resolution approving final site plan SPR dash twenty-five dash zero-three for Hawkins Parking Lot Expansion located at seventy-six-oh-one Industrial Lane. Our senior planner, Alyssa Livingstone, is here to present. Good evening, Ms. Livingstone.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I am Alyssa Livingstone, Senior Planner. This presentation is for the consideration of approval for final site plan SPR twenty-five-oh-three for Hawkins Service Company. The proposed project seeks to bring this site into compliance with our LDCs. Here is the general area map. The property is three-point-two-two-five acres in size. The proposed project request is for final site plan approval for twenty-five thousand square feet of parking lot improvement and expansion. This is consistent with the current zoning and uses of the adjacent parcels, which is light industrial. The site's future land use designation is industrial, which is compatible with the proposed site improvements. The project aims to increase the parking capacity to accommodate current and future operational needs of the business. The business currently has a staff of twenty-two employees. Gravel had been poured to create a parking area without any permits. Staff discovered a code violation on this property when the owner applied for interior renovation permits. As a condition of allowing any further work on the property, the applicant was required to bring the entire site into full compliance with current city standards. Over the last year, the applicant has been cooperating diligently with city staff to meet this requirement. They have successfully completed and submitted all necessary plans to fully comply with city standards. Should the council grant approval, the existing gravel material will remain as it meets the surface requirements for the industrial zoning district. Here is the overall site plan. The existing parking area has twenty-five spaces. Fifty new parking spaces are to be added. The proposed new spaces are highlighted by the gray shaded area. This would lead to a total of seventy-five spaces, three of which are ADA compliant. The sole access is via industrial lane. Here is the landscape plan. Sixteen trees are to be added in total throughout the lot. The Southwest Florida Management District confirmed that no additional stormwater management would be needed on site. The impervious coverage upon completion would be point-five-five. This is below the point-eight-five that is permitted in industrial zones in the city. There are three conditions with this approval. These include standard conditions regarding date stamped on plans and land development code language. This concludes my presentation. For questions regarding the details of the site plans or the project itself, the applicant is prepared to respond directly to the council.
The applicant wish to make comments? It's a voluntary, it's up to you.
We'll hear your questions if needed.
Okay, very good, thank you. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing, yes, sir, please approach the podium. We just need you to start with your name and city of address, or city of residence, please. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Troy Zimmerman, and it seems like, you know, you guys tried to stop this guy for his parking lot. Now you have three times the parking lot. But that's it.
Are there other members of the public who wish to comment? Okay, seeing none, councilmembers' questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
So originally, the size of the building, did the parking lot that is paved and was built, did we approve the number of parking spaces for that square footage of the building?
Believe so. For the initial asphalt parking?
Yes.
Yes, so the on, the part which was done without city's approval was the addition of the gravel.
Well, what, what I'm asking is actually, was the parking lot that was originally constructed sufficient for the size of the building in terms of parking requirements for the square footage of the building?
Yes.
Okay, so now, um, with the gravel lot that has been added, um, so we're approving this after the fact because that work has already been done?
Well, I would not say we're approving it as an auto-lap permit because the gravel has been added. So the applicant came in to the city to apply for interior building renovations, and we found that there was unpermitted work. And as a result, in order to continue any work on the site, they had to bring the site into full compliance. So the parking or the additional proposed parking would exceed what's required based off of the size and the use of the building, so...
Okay, uh, so my, my last question has to do with, uh, well, I have two, okay? One is the car count, um, because the original assessment of this property and the parking would have been based on the number of spaces that were paved versus the number of spaces that we're looking at adding. Um, and then I, my last question, it has to do with storm water, and I know you said, Swift Mud said that we don't need any additional capacity. Is that because this site is still pervious surface as opposed to paving? So it, the site can still drain naturally even though it's not grass anymore?
So based off of the stormwater management district assessment, they said that the additional gravel added to the lot would not result in any increase in surface runoff.
Okay, so that's still, that's a pervious surface that would still allow for drainage?
Because the maximum is point-eight-five, and with the proposed additions, it would bring it to point-five-five, which is way below the point-eight-five, which is permitted in that industrial zone.
I think the petitioner would like to reply to, did you have something you wanted to add, sir?
Should I go up to the board?
Yes, yes, sir. Just need your name and...
My name's Eli Payne with Base Site Engineering, uh, two-zero-five-four, St. Pete. Yeah, so we, we pulled a Swift Mud permit, there's a master Swift Mud permit for the site that allows ninety percent CN, which is a impervious ratio, and with this new added impervious, even though it is gravel, which is not fully impervious, uh, even with, considering it fully impervious, we're still below that, that allowed for the site.
Okay, and I mean, I just would, I just wanna make sure we're on the record because we did have a considerable amount of stormwater drainage at the last hurricane episode, and obviously, we know that that was, uh, we, we struggled to make sure, to get the water off. Um, so that, so my, with regard to the parking traffic counts, is there any, uh, you know, is there any issue with, I, when we originally permitted this site and, and contemplated the construction, et cetera, it was based on a building this size with this number of parking spaces. Um, so I don't know anything about the traffic count, or is this beyond what the street can handle, or, or, you know, I don't know anything about what we're adding in terms of the capacity, how that has been engineered to make sure, or to, to make sure that we don't have traffic problems. That's it.
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, we went through the concurrency process with the city, and I think we were under the one percent, so we didn't even need to do, uh, concurrency application, um, or didn't need to do a full traffic study.
Okay.
So kinda de minimis there. And with the parking, yeah. So we, he has twenty, twenty-ish roughly, um, employees on site that will use the assisting parking lot. The other parking lot is kinda for, um, vans as they come and go throughout the day to pick up supplies, um, to, to travel to, uh, treat, I think they're HVAC company.
Okay.
Just travel to do services for the day.
Okay, that's it.
City manager, did you have?
Along with bringing the site up to code, you know, they had to put in landscape islands, the fits, the gravel lot, they had to put in eighteen roughly trees, uh, photometric, ADA make it, ADA compliant, clean up the dumpsters. He's doing, he's doing a lot of things to make the site, uh, really improve the site.
Other questions? Councilmember Cravitz?
Regarding the sixteen trees?
Mm-hmm.
What size and what type?
Uh, the minimum size requirements, I believe it's like ten, ten feet tall, three inches in diameter.
Oh, it's a nice tree.
I believe, gotta check the toad. Yeah, eight foot tall, two, two inch diameter.
You don't happen to know the species?
Uh, oats and grape myrtles, I believe.
Great. How do you feel about landscaping swales?
What, what, you know, just like in general, or, um...
For that parking lot?
Yeah, I mean, we, the, the site does drain through, um, landscaping...
Okay.
Before it reaches the swales that are on the, along the road. So the, the master development has swales along the road that collect all the storm water from all the sites and route it to the, to the master pond.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll, we'll kinda be treating as we go through this, as we go through our buffer into the swale for more treatment as it does to the master pond, which will have a wet treatment.
Good, and, um, you're not the owner, you're the representative of the owner, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir. Engineer.
You don't happen to know how it came to pass in days of yore that they built out this parking lot without a, a permit?
No, I think they just assumed it was a gravel lot, there's a lot of gravel lots in the area, it's a very industrial area, um, and then, uh, yeah, just trying to rectify the situation.
Thanks for answering questions. I yield.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
If there are no other questions, is there a motion?
Sure. Moved to approve the final site plan SPR twenty-five dash oh-three for Hawkins Parking Lot Expansion located at seven-six-oh-one Industrial Lane with the conditions as listed.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? No nays, motion carries, resolution is adopted, thank you.
Thank you.
So the next three items are related, and so, um, I understand that there is a request by the petitioner for a continuance in this matter. So what we will do procedurally is to open all three of these public hearings concurrently. So we'll open all three, we will hear from the petitioner for their request for continuance, and then the council will, um, determine whether to grant the continuance or not, but the, but that way, it's for all three, we don't have to have three hearings to hear the same request. And so, um, there's some issues regarding public comment on this, but I'll mention that when we open that up. And so, I will open the first public hearing, you bear with me, I gotta open three. The, I'm opening the first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan and future land use amendment designation for fifty-four sixteen and fifty-four eighteen Rainbow Drive, otherwise known as CPA dash twenty-four dash zero-one. The next hearing we're opening at the same time is the first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to rezone fifty-four sixteen and fifty-four eighteen Rainbow Drive, otherwise known as RZP dash two-four dash zero-three, from residential R-ten to commercial general. Third public hearing that will be opened is actually only a resolution approving the conditional use, otherwise known as CU dash twenty-five dash zero-one, proposing parking lot expansion and placement of accessory structures. So those three agenda items are now open, and we will now hear from Clay Matthews, who is representing the owner, who is here to request a continuance of all three matters.
Evening, councilmembers. Clay Matthews from Smoker Matthews, my firm is located in Tampa, Florida. Uh, we represent Gas Bars Patio Bar and Grill and Liquor Shop. I'm here with my client, Jimmy Chacho and his wife, Patsy Chacho. They're the owners of Gas Bars. Um, and our client is seeking to expand his parking lot to serve his existing needs over there at Gas Bars. And to facilitate that project, we have submitted three applications to that effect, which you just read off, the complaint amendment, the rezoning, the conditional use. Um, we're respectfully requesting that we continue the hearing on all three matters to January twentieth, twenty-twenty-six. And, um, the, the basis is, we, we just received the staff reports on Friday afternoon, so we've had some limited time to review those, and they've risen some issues that need to be addressed a little further. There's also a couple of issues that have arisen over the past couple of weeks that, um, I've been discussing with Mr. Mueller and Mr. Moreta over the past couple of weeks that have sort of just crystallized recently. Um, and, uh, you know, we were dealing with, with prior staff for the, for actually almost two years at this point, and, um, we had been under some understandings with prior staff. Fast forward, um, there's been some other issues that have arisen. And so I think we just need additional time to continue to address those issues, and for, for those reasons, we would respectfully request that the applications be continued to, um, to January twentieth, which I think should be more than sufficient time to work through these issues and potentially evaluate some other options to facilitate the project and to achieve our clients' objectives. So I think that should be sufficient time. So with that, we, we respectfully request the continuance.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Now, I know I have a couple of requests for public comment on these items, which we will still honor. However, that's changed a little bit. So the, the public comment here, the issue before the council is simply the issue of whether to grant the continuance or not. And so the comment needs to be, the comments should be restricted to that, not whether you are for or against approval of the, of the issue. That will occur at the hearing. The question before the council now is simply whether to approve or deny the request for continuance. So, um, I have two requests to speak. If you still wish to speak on the merits of the continuance, uh, Mr. Juan Carlos Perez, you are recognized, uh, if you wish to speak on the continuance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Always good to see councilmembers, uh, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Carlos Baya, City Manager, and Madam, uh, City Clerk, J.C. Perez from Temple Terrace. Before I would say whether we approve or not, or you approve or not the continuance, can you elaborate a little bit on what exactly that entails? Because I have a petition that I'd like to honor, since I'm representing a group of neighbors from that community, and my understanding was that this portion of the hearing would not be addressed tonight because signs were removed over the weekend, and when I noticed... And when I noticed that yesterday, I contacted the city in the morning, and the information that I was given was that this was postponed. And so I went back to the people on the list that you should have, it's, it's a list that I sent to city staff and that I gave earlier today to the city clerk, along with some other evidence, photographic, et cetera. But I told these people, unfortunately, not to show up tonight and speak because that was the understanding of what had happened. So going back to the original question, then, what would be the merit of either approving or not this continuance, and then I can maybe give you a better answer?
I, I can't enter.
Okay.
Any evidence into the record here.
Am I allowed then to, to make my case? I would, on...
Only on the continuance. Only on the continuance. You, you, there'll be ample, there'll be public comment if the continuance is denied, and it goes tonight, you'll be recognized to make your case, but that, people for or against, that, that will take place in the context of the hearing.
Point of order, if I may direct a question to the city attorney. What we have on the agenda is not a continuance. What we have on the agenda, strictly speaking, is still the original item, and so even though the petitioner has now made a request for continuance, I don't actually see that reflected in the literal text that is in front of us and which is legally binding. So from my perspective, are we allowing the petitioner to control the agenda by making the request for continuance, or does the agenda supersede because the agenda is what was noticed publicly?
At this time, we have a motion for continuance. It does, that is what the issue is in front of the city council. Depending on how that is handled, the applicant has the right to have, to ask for a continuance. So he has asked for that continuance, and that has to be taken up before you get to the merits of the matter. If it is continued, then the entire agenda items will get continued to the January twentieth, twenty twenty-six agenda.
So even though it's not reflected in the agenda?
That is correct. The motion for continuance was officially made now.
Mm-hmm. So at, at what point does what people say become restricted when that motion is made?
Correct, because the only issue before the city council at this moment is the continuance. That is the only thing that can be spoken to at this time.
Pretty fun way to control the crowd then, isn't it? If you make a motion...
Say that again?
Fun way to control the crowd then. If you have a lot of people coming, you don't like how many people have shown up, you just make a motion for a continuance, and all of a sudden, it's shut down? Is that how that works?
That's the way you want to look at it. The applicant has the right to make the, the request. He has made the request. It is up to the city council to make that decision.
I yield the floor. Thank you.
Mr. Perez, you have four yeses.
I would ask then to, to deny it and to, you know, allow or recognize the, the work that we've done, the neighbors, and to officially record it and not wait till January because there are many issues with blight and the conditions of the properties that we would like to have addressed. So I would say no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. I have also a request to speak from Ms. Tumbelson. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for seeing, thank you for listening to me. First of all, I would like to say that I have known the Chachas since nineteen eighties. Okay? They have, as a code enforcement officer, they have always done what I asked them to do within a very reasonable time. Now, the other thing I would like to mention is when the lots were bought in the rear, one was bought in two thousand and nineteen.
Ms. Tumbelson? I apologize, I don't mean to interject, but again, we're only here on the matter of the continuance at this...
Yes, I understand that. The other lot was done in two thousand seventeen. This is a reason that I think this should be continued because this has been a long-term plan to take care of the parking situation. That is my statement, and I feel that the Chachas, because they've always been here to help, the city should have the continuance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tumbelson. So, Ms. Bates, we might need some help with the next one. We have a, a request for comment from Mary Rose Owens, and I don't know if Ms. Owens will be able to reach the microphone on top of the podium?
Can't quite hear everybody.
Oh, okay, well, that's okay. We, we want to hear from her, but I, but we're going to need a little help with either lowering that microphone, or if we have a cordless microphone.
Mary Rose, they're gonna bring you a cordless...
We're gonna, we're gonna give us a moment, and we're gonna try to figure out a way to make this easier for you.
Perhaps she could remain seated while speaking exceptionally?
Perhaps, if we can get the cord over there, sure.
Yes.
But that microphone will probably pick up Ms. Owens from where she's...
It'll pick up, okay, well, if she stands beside the podium, um... Okay. We can...
That should pick you up just fine.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, hi.
Good evening.
My name is Mary Rose Owens, residing at one-ten South Lockmore Avenue, Temple Terrace, for the past fifty-one years. I want to tell you that I have known Mr. Chacho for many years, and I will tell you, he is the most generous, giving person you will ever know. I know that his interest is in Temple Terrace, and he would never do anything that would not enhance the growth of our city. He is truly a Temple Terrace person, one that we all love very much and are very generous in supporting his cause. I would ask that you support Mr. Chacho. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. That's the last request I currently have. Are there other members of...
I'm sorry, I don't hear you.
Oh, no, no, I said, thank you.
I want to make sure that doesn't get away from you.
Are there other members of the public who wish to comment on this item of the continuance? Okay, seeing none. Councilmember questions?
I have a question.
Councilmember Fernandez?
So I guess what, my question has to do with the signage, and are, can you go through where we stand, because what's the requirement for the signs to be in place, and how we would actually proceed if the signs were not in place according to the rules that the council had established in the past?
Yes. As was kind of explained earlier, the signs were pulled prior to the time that they should have been pulled from the property. The rezoning requires that the signs be there until the second reading. In the, the, for the complan amendment, they needed to be there until, they should be, they should remain and be removed within seven days after each public hearing. So since they were pulled early, we probably have a misnotice here, and that would state that, you know, because there's a misnotice, people might have misunderstood why they were pulled, it would have to be, would not be able to be heard tonight anyhow because of that misnotice. So we would be needing to continue the case again so that it could be reposted.
So I guess that's, that's what I'm asking about, the procedure tonight, that is, just, and just for the record, for people watching, city staff did not pull the signs or ask to have the signs pulled. The city staff did not operate any, in any way, except differently from what they are required to operate. But with the signs being pulled and, and not being displayed in accordance to our rules, then city council theoretically could say, we could say no to the continuance, and then we would have a hearing tonight, but people wouldn't know that we're having a hearing because it wasn't noticed properly. I'm not saying we are, I just, it's a possibility. So I just, so procedure-wise, to me, it doesn't, I don't see how we could proceed with any action on it since it wasn't properly noticed. That's, that, anyway, that's my thought.
No questions.
Councilmember Kravitz?
Who made the motion for the continuance?
Nobody.
Nobody. We're in question.
So what, what motion are we discussing right now?
There is no...
The motion for the continuance was made by...
Don't we have to have, I believe that the motion to continue, or not continue, or dismiss without prejudice is council prerogative? I don't believe that the petitioner can make a motion.
True that, he, he's made the request, yeah, there hasn't been a motion yet.
So I'm just making sure that I understand what's being discussed at this moment. We're just asking questions of whom? The petitioner?
Yes, you can ask.
Because last I saw, we had public comment, I'm just talking about how this flow of the meeting is going and whether we're following an orderly process here, since it is quasi-judicial.
We always go to public comment, and then we go to councilmember questions, which is where we are, that's how we do it.
Which are directed to the...
The staff or the petitioner, or the owner?
Okay.
Or the attorney.
That's good. Then I have a question for the city attorney. From what I read, and feel free to correct me, when we have a misnotice, it deprives the body that typically would have jurisdiction of the ability to make a decision in the case. So the only thing that we are discussing right now is whether to continue this, in which case the notice would have to be done properly, or we would dismiss it without prejudice, thereby restarting the process fresh through the petitioner? Is that what I understand as being our two options? Do you agree with that?
Again, right now, the only thing before the city council is the motion to continue.
Which is, depending upon how that goes... There is no motion to continue yet.
The request for a continue.
Okay, yeah.
Once that has been disposed of, then the city coun, depending upon how it's disposed of, if it's, the case is continued, then it would just be moved to that January twentieth, twenty twenty-six. If that, that request is denied, then the city council can bring up other items.
That's very interesting. So from what I just heard, if we continue it to another date, it would be a continuation of the same process, which has the defect of a misnotice now?
It would have the opportunity to correct the misnotice.
And how would he do that?
They would repost the property within the time required, you know, the ten days or fourteen days prior to the hearing, you know, if it gets continued, let's assume it gets continued to the twentieth, January twentieth, they would have to post it, there would, depending upon how, you know, how, whether we keep the hearing, public hearing open or not, there may be the need to re, republish in the newspaper, and there may be the need to put out the good neighbor letters again also.
I, I understand that it's possible to put the sign back, but what I, what I believe is the case, and again, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, the posting of the sign is a strict requirement based on section twelve, one ninety-three of Temple Terrace's Land Development Code, and I'm happy to read out the paragraph here. The sign, the sign shall remain posted on the property until after the second public hearing and then be removed, this is exactly city attorney, what you were just mentioning, shall be removed unless a petition for reconsideration shall have been submitted, blah, blah, blah. So the issue that I see here is that we do not actually have a continuous posting of the sign because it has been removed, and so even if we continue it, there will have been time in which the sign was not there, and so the strict liability for posting the sign cannot be fulfilled if we continue. So really, the only option we have legally would be to dismiss this without prejudice, allowing the petitioner to bring his case fresh and do the notice correctly, and then the sign can be out there the whole time until, as you said, after the second public reading, and then the notice will be cured because there will no longer be a misnotice defect.
I don't know if I necessarily agree with that. I think that the case, if the city council so wishes, can be continued, and the matter can be, you know, and any notices can be corrected prior to that continued date. I don't think that you have to deny the petition without prejudice and have him start over again. I think that there's other ways to correct the misnotice.
Can you name one?
Yes, to re, repost, re, repost it, re-advertise it, send out the letters again in order to establish good notice.
Okay, so just to be clear, if he does that, then the sign will not have been removed three days ago, and it will have been up continuously?
I'm just not going to agree with you on that, Mr. Kravitz. I'm not going to get into this parsing. I believe that the notice can be corrected if the matter is continued.
Okay. In that case, I yield the floor.
Yes, maybe we can clarify this a little bit. If the signs had not been removed, and if we had a continuance, would those signs have to remain up until, from now until Ju, January twentieth? Or would we repost that in a timely, would the signs have to, in this weather, who knows? They'd be, they'd be, they could be destroyed, or vandalized, or any other, any other combination of, of problems. As long, when would they be required to be reposted?
Actually, you're, you are correct. If they, if this case were continued and the signs had stayed up, the signs would have to stay there until the next hearing.
They would theoretically have to be...
Until it was either disposed of on first reading or second reading.
They could have to stay up there for three or four months?
Yes. I believe that is correct, yes.
So if we, if, if a, if a continuance is granted, okay, when would the signs have to be reposted? Immediately? Assuming they're still available?
You were trying to make, Mr. Kravitz, and I wasn't getting? Was that, was that your point?
My point was actually really simple, which is that if the signs aren't up the whole time, it's a misnotice, and that, under Florida law, by my understanding, it is a strict standard. You either have the signs up the entire time, or you don't. And again, you can debate around the topic. Again, just my personal opinion here, I'm not the expert. What I read here under posted doesn't mean that an act of nature removes the sign, it remains posted if you put it in your property with the intention of having it displayed, and if something accidentally sweeps it away and you then go back and put it in, it's still posted. And likewise, you can always have vandalism where people come and steal the sign, but obviously, if you take the sign down, that is no longer an act of God, it's no longer a trespass, right? And so you have a misnotice. And I think once you have that, if it's a strict standard, which a hundred percent of what I read says it is, you have the misnotice or you don't, and if you have it, it's a critical failure, and you start from fresh, so that everyone can participate in the process.
Well, Vice Mayor still has the...
Yeah. I think, Mr. Schisler, you are correct, that had, had the, had the signs not been pulled, they would have had, and this continuance would have come before, they would have had to keep the signs out there. To that effect, I don't think, and I would have, just have to look, look more into it, but I do believe that a misnotice can be corrected. You just can't go forward with the case on the merits during, with the misnotice.
I looked real hard, and I didn't find anything. Perhaps the petitioner's attorney can explain how such a misnotice can be cured. I don't know.
All right, I, I think we're, I think we're overcomplicating this whole affair, we truly do believe that. And if you guys want to do your legal sparring, do, do, you can do it behind, behind the scene, I'm ready to make a motion whenever, whenever, I'm just saying, whatever, whenever...
I'll come back to you, but I think Councilmember Fernandez?
I do. So what I'm...
I do. So what I'm, I, obviously, we've talked about this and what I'm not understanding is if there is a misnotice, which I think there was a misnotice, I don't understand how we can take any action tonight on this in term, because if we're looking at granting the continuance, we, it's been requested that we grant a continuance. However, council has the discretion to say yes or no. If council were to take action on that emotion such as that, since we have the ability to say no, then that would then generate a hearing tonight, which then would not have been properly noticed. So I guess I'm not understanding how we could even go forward on the, on a motion and, and it's not, this has nothing to do with the merits of saying yes or saying no. I'm just saying that there's the possibility we would say no and therefore that action would not have been properly noticed. So to me, it just seems like, and I'm, I don't, I don't know the legal process, but it doesn't seem like we can, we can move forward with any action on these, including considering the continuance, but I don't know exactly the process that would be for me or somebody, you know, for us voting if we couldn't take action on this tonight.
I think that's a good point, and I will say that, um, I do believe that we do have the no, the problem with the misnotice, and I don't know if you're willing to just withdraw your petition.
Couple points. I, I think that, I'm happy to cut through this notice problem and say that if, if you grant the continuance, that was with the assumption that we would renotice and cure the notice problem. We're gonna, we would like to comply, if we're gonna be continued, we're gonna comply with the code, repost, resend out notice to ensure that the neighbors and everybody in the surrounding community have noticed at the hearing and everyone can be heard. Um, so we will repost and we will renotice to cure the problem. If, um, if you deny the request for continuance, and then I agree with council member Fernandez, and I, I believe, Mr. Miller, you suggested this earlier, that if, um, if you were to try to go forward and hear the, the hearing item on its merits, it has technically been misnotice, so it cannot go forward and be heard on the merits. So then it would be, it would have to be continued. Um, we're certainly not prepared at this point to withdraw all three applications. Um, we, we want to work through these issues with you and Mr. Merida, so we're not prepared to withdraw them. Um, but we think either way, um, it can't go forward. Um, and either way, we're gonna seek to cure the notice problem and then have it reheard at some point in the future unless we come to, unless we choose and pursue some alternative solution.
I guess my suggestion to get us through this would be that we not continue it to a date certain, because I do believe we have a problem. We have a misnotice.
Well, let me, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I, I don't, I'm not an attorney. I don't think, from my understanding and statutes and from our rules, I don't think we have the problem we think we have. I think we have a problem if we don't continue it. If we were to say, no, we're gonna do this tonight because we're tired of it and we want to get it done with, then we would have a problem because it wasn't properly noticed. But if we're gonna continue it to a time in the future, there's an opportunity to cure the notice problem. And so these signs are temporary signs that are literally poked into the ground. You can't tell me that people don't steal these signs all the time and that if you wanted to kill a project, all you gotta do is sneak over there in the middle of the night and steal the signs for a day and you've now misnoticed the whole thing and it has to be dismissed without prejudice and they have to start all over again. Well, then you steal the signs again. I, I mean, nothing would ever get built because there'd be a whole group of people out there just taking the signs for 24 hours and nothing could move. So that can't possibly be the state of things. So I, I don't know. You, I, I'm gonna take advice from the city attorney, but I don't think that the fact that these signs were removed prematurely in good faith, let's not lose sight of the fact that the, that the petitioner knew that his legal counsel was going to ask for a continuance. I would assume, I don't know what's going on inside people, other people's heads, but I would assume had no idea that a request for continuance is gonna meet with such resistance. It's a pretty common and innocuous thing and just assumed, well, I don't need these signs up anymore because we're not gonna have the hearing on Tuesday. And so now the whole thing is being thrown into this, I, I don't understand if we don't meet until January 20th on this property, it's only October. So if we go out and repost signs saying January 20th and those signs remain up, that's legally defective and they gotta withdraw and start the whole, I, that's hard for me to believe.
It is. It's, yeah, it's become, I think, an unnecessary quagmire. I think in order, I think that this, any misnotice can be cured with this continuance, and I believe, I don't see necessarily how that prejudices anybody else because there's going to be an opportunity for, for a full hearing on the 20th that will be properly noticed. So I, I myself would prefer to see us go forward with continuing this to a date certain. There are some issues, but I think they can all be cured appropriately by continuing this case.
Vice Mayor.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
Where's that stage? Okay, I move that we, uh, grant the continuance, properly notify it. I don't believe that, I, I, I'll have a comment on the, on this later, but, um, approve the, approve the continuance to the date certain, January 20th?
Twenty twenty six.
Okay, 2026. Um, signage go back up as soon as humanly possible so that it's properly noticed and that should cure, hopefully that would cure any, any, um, issues that, that are arriving is for, for the misnotice and then move forward from there.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor, I need you to read in each of the three hearings that are open.
Okay, no problem. All right.
Twelve C, D.
So we'll do, so move to approve the continuance for item 12C, the first public hearing and first reading ordinance, amending the CP, uh, comprehensive plan future land use management map designation for five, 5416 and 5418 Rainbow Drive CPA 2401, uh, calling for proper signage to be posted as soon as possible. Date continue, uh, continued to date certain of January 20th, 2026.
Now, just read the headings of the other two hearings.
Then, uh, three, three separate motions or one motion?
Just one motion, but I need all three things.
And then the, um, uh, could, uh, grant, uh, proven the continuance for first public, item 12D, first public hearing or first reading of the ordinance to rezone 5416 and 5418 Re- uh, Rainbow Drive RZP 2403 and res- to, from residential 10R10 to commercial, uh, general CG. And then finally, resul- um, uh, motion to continue the res- um, do we have to do one one for this one?
No, same motion, just read the heading.
Okay, 12E, resolution approving conditional use CU 25 dash oh five, proposed parking lot expansion and placement of accessory structure.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second discussion of the motion. Councilmember Kravitz?
So by January, when I, we would come together again to discuss this, um, the error, the defect will have somehow been cured, and I'm wondering how exactly that will occur and in what way that would be different from starting over with the process and doing the notice properly. Because from my understanding, that is what we're discussing, is that petitioner will go and do the notice properly. How is that different from starting over? And how, how can a misnotice where the applicant has removed the sign, and again, only talking about the applicant removing the sign, then it's not being continuously posted, not talking about trespass, not talking about natural disasters. How exactly does that get cured? Because as I said in the Temple Terrace Land Development Code, it looks to me like a strict standard that the sign has to be posted out there. I, as the owner puts it out with the intention of it being posted throughout the entire time, all the way until the end of the second reading. And if it's removed prior, I don't exactly see how we can go back in time and fix the fact that the notice wasn't done. So why not simply do it properly from the beginning? Because when I make a mistake like that, I don't always try and fix it. Sometimes it makes a lot more sense to just start over and do it right. I yield.
Okay, discussion of the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
One nay.
Councilmember Kravitz votes nay. Okay, January 20th.
Thank you, council.
Carryover council business. New carryover council business. New business and board reports. Councilmember Kravitz?
Next. Um, question directed to the city manager regarding the virtual PFAS town hall, which we voted to have. Is there any update on when that will occur?
Yep. We, we've discussed that. We discussed that a few meetings ago. So what, once we get the, uh, my suggestion at the time, which the council, I believe, concurred with, was to, uh, get the report from CHA, um, have that information and then hold the, uh, the, do a public town hall in fact, and also have a component that would be a, a teams meeting or most likely be a teams meeting, um, uh, as part of that, uh, once we get the final report.
Is there a timeframe?
Yes. So, uh, they are, as I've mentioned to the council in their, in your update, they have, uh, they're doing pilot testing. There are some new technologies that have come onto the marketplace that we've asked them to look at. So they're doing those, uh, in, in terms of pilot testing and bench testing as well. And because of the, uh, that additional testing, the timeframe, originally, we were thinking it would be done by, let's say, December, January. We pushed that out. Now we're looking probably June, uh, to get that final report in from CHA.
So no virtual town hall on PFAS until June of 2026?
But I wouldn't have anything to report new. So that's what I've informed the council before. Once we had information to report, we'd have a, could have a live town hall if the council chose to, as well as a virtual town hall.
Ah, perhaps I misremember, but I think when we passed that motion, the idea was that we were going to present the essentially same content as the live PFAS town hall, but in a virtual format so that people who are disabled or otherwise unable to access the live town hall can participate in a similar way. But if we now make a contingent on new information being available, which I do not think was in the text of that motion that passed, then we are not really achieving that objective because the people who aren't able to go to the live town hall won't have any participation option until the middle of next year.
So I would just say that when we had the live town hall in August, we also had it on streaming and we also took questions from the public from the streaming version of those town, of that town hall. So if someone was, were disabled, they could have participated that way. That was one form to participate. So we did take questions in that format. I've already mentioned this to the council. You, the virtual town hall was, we had the live town hall, it was directed, there was a virtual town hall. I suggested to the council that it be held once we had information, because otherwise you'd be pu- you'd be publicizing a new town hall now, virtually. People would think there's new information. There isn't really any new information right now of substance. So my suggestion was to make better use of time to do it once we have new information.
Okay. Let the record reflect that, in my opinion, the motion that we passed back then saying live and virtual town hall, let's get as many people as we can into the PFAS discussion. My personal view, it's not being implemented. Um, I have another point on Riverside Park Workshop coming up. Um, I'm curious if we have an update for Riverside Park's design based on the public feedback that we received. And again, the reason why I'm asking this question again and again is because the point of the Riverside Park Workshop is to discuss what we may or may not change with respect to Riverside Park, but we don't know what half will have already changed when we have this discussion if we don't get their design update based on the over 350 people who submitted their feedback to them. If we don't get that, we're flying blind. And so this workshop doesn't make a whole lot of sense in my mind.
Well, I, ultimately, the council dictates the design of, of Riverside Park. Uh, we were planning the workshop so the council would have an opportunity, we'd have associates there, to have a conversation about where we are, what you'd like to see, um, the costs, which have been shared with the council, if you'd like to phase the project. So we had, that was the point of the workshop, to allow the council, who ultimately, again, has the authority and to direct, to direct how you want to see this park develop, the ability to do that. Um, so that was the premise.
Are they gonna give us an updated design based on the public feedback that they solicited half a year ago or not?
If you would like to, I mean, we can have them submit, if the council wishes, we can have them submit whatever design they have at this moment.
But what was, what was the plan when we solicited the public feedback? Wasn't it that they were gonna somehow use it?
No, I don't, I don't think that's how it works. Typically, with the public feedback, it's shared with us. And when they come with the design, we take the public's input and say, well, the public wants this. I mean, I don't, I don't think that the design, I mean, that's how we've done it in the past. I don't, I mean, we've never built a park, so maybe I'm wrong. But in other, like, buildings and things that we've solicited public comment, done town halls, the public feedback is given to us and, and then we drive that at the meeting, um, and say, well, the public would like the, doesn't want the observation, whatever that public feedback is.
That would be one workflow, but what I remember and what I have documented in multiple emails is that the process was, we're gonna have this public hearing, we're gonna bring all the public in, they're gonna give their feedback. They went up and they made their marks. A lot of people did it online. Half was then, this was the workflow again. They were supposed to provide us with an updated design based on the public feedback. Now, if they're not doing that anymore, or if somehow the last six months of communications to that effect was all an imagination of mine, then that's perfectly fine. But it seems to me like they owe us an update where they take the public feedback into account. But I've made my point, so let the record reflect that. I don't think that we've gotten our public feedback from half yet, and it would be very nice to have before we have the workshop, and I won't belabor the point anymore. Um, and I have one more question on Enigma Plaza. Is there any update with respect to the driveway encroachment issue on that property?
Yes. As I've mentioned to council in an update several weeks ago, um, what, what we have provided them, actually, Mr. Polly, have we actually provided this to them or are they still waiting on completion?
Good evening, Greg Polly, Director of Community Development. Um, in, uh, in addressing your question, sir, the document that was approved for delivery was delivered by hand to the site. Um, I don't recall the exact date, but it was within days of us discussing it. Um, it was relayed to us at that time that, um, the owner of the project was out of the country. Um, I do not know what his current status is, um, but it was delivered to the site supervisor, uh, with instructions to deliver it to the owner as soon as he is available to do so.
So for the council's, uh, just sort of recollection, so what we've done is, in meeting with the developer of the Enigma, the way his plaza was approved, he has a southern bay of parking, that the only way to access that southern bay is by encroaching into the city's property. We have provided a temporary, um, uh, authorization for them to make use of that property, of our city property, just along that edge to have access to those parking spaces, um, until such time as the city deems that we don't longer want to authorize that, uh, or until such time, for example, as we, we have a developer for that property or we want to use that property for something else. It's totally at our discretion, uh, but in the meantime, I felt it was fair to allow the developer to use that and to get access to those parking spaces.
Yeah, sounds like a reasonable solution to me. Um, final question, no longer relating to, uh, Mr. Polly. Uh, when I was first elected, we had a discussion, one of the very first meetings we had when we were still having in-person meetings, was whether this three-panel fence rule, which was not locatable in the statutes, um, would continue to be applied. And from my understanding, um, the previous code enforcement director, Tom Barone, did continue to apply that rule, even though there is no statutory basis for it. So my question is, are we still applying that rule or have we ceased?
I would say that if you'd allow me, I'd follow up with staff on that and I can have a report back to the council at the next meeting.
Okay. And since I still have the floor, I would like to bring up the topic of the golf course and planting trees in it one more time. Um, we all love trees. This is a top three issue for the citizens of Temple Terrace. I think it's a fantastic option here to go into the golf course and plant some trees, um, because it's beautiful and I think the golf course affects hundreds and hundreds of people in the city. A lot of people live near the golf course. Even people who don't live near the golf course will go on the golf course. They'll walk past it. They'll enjoy it. Sometimes they'll walk on the golf course and until, you know, And until, you know, as far as I'm aware, there's a really good relationship between the community and the golf course, so that it sort of doubles as a bit of a central park. Of course, with the golf-playing element still in the foreground. And so, on June 17th, I made a motion, once upon a time, to go to the golf course, and let's cooperate with them to plant some more trees. And that didn't happen. I got an email from the general manager back then, to the following effect. "I've been informed by the president of our Board of Directors that he is working with the mayor about receiving trees from the city." So, I thought, "Great. Okay, let's see how that goes." My response was, "That's great. As long as the goal gets accomplished, that's all I care about." So, I recently asked whether we're any closer to the goal of putting any trees into the golf course. And I found out, interestingly enough, that the trees last planted in the golf course are from 2022. So, almost three, nearly four years have passed, since a single city tree was put into the golf course. And that is clearly not a sufficient number. Zero trees is not enough trees going into the golf course. And so, I have a motion, and that would be that we appropriate $500,000 from the tree fund, specifically for Temple Terrace Golf Course landscaping, tree planting, and the necessary irrigation infrastructure, with the implementation to be coordinated through the city manager's office, with quarterly progress reports to city council, beginning with the first update being provided in January 2026, at one of the two meetings of the city council in that month, and providing an implementation plan and timeline. So, we have $1.4 million in the tree fund now. And when I was elected, we had $1.2 million in it. And what I see is that the amount of money in this tree fund continues to increase, and no trees are being planted, or very few. So, if the money in the adopted tree fund is not being spent, that means its purpose is not being achieved. Because the reason there's money in that fund is because other people have taken trees out. They've chopped them down. And because they chopped those trees down, we have had to pay money into the tree fund. So, what we're having is trees going out, money accumulating in this tree fund, and it's not being spent to replace the trees. So, that's why I think we should take a large amount of this money, which still is only a third of the money that's in there, and cooperate with the golf course to beautify it, provide it with great landscaping, put some lovely trees in there, and work with them, so that we can beautify that whole part of the city. And I know irrigation has been an issue in the past. Let's use some of that money to lay irrigation. Irrigation is not expensive. It is easy to install. And there are many companies that do that service. So, I think that it would be a really interesting opportunity here to use a space that is not being fully beautified like it could be. And at the same time, we'd be doing a lot by doing this to support our golf club, which many people also value. So, there's my motion, and I'm going to second.
Would you please restate the motion in a
I'd be happy to.
The record can
So, the motion is, "I move that we appropriate $500,000 from the tree fund, specifically for Temple Terrace Golf Course landscaping, tree planting, and the necessary irrigation infrastructure, with implementation to be coordinated through the city manager's office, with quarterly progress reports to city council, beginning with the first update in January 2026, at one of the two city council meetings, providing an implementation plan and timeline."
I'll second that for discussion. I have some questions.
Councilmember Fernandez.
So, first question is, is the tree fund allowed to be used for irrigation?
No.
So, that, and, because that was a concern of mine. Because I know that at the country club, when they got their irrigation repaired and green, and they did the work on the greens, that the trade-off was SWIFTMUD provided some grant funds. And in doing that, the country club had to reduce their permit for the number of gallons they're allowed to pump. So, they were very clear that they have no capacity to share the water. Because that, they gave up that capacity. So, my question would be, one is, can the tree fun, funds from the tree fund actually be used towards any kind of irrigation, even though the irrigation is to irrigate trees? And what, what would the water source be? What would that irrigation connect to in order to provide the water there? Because it cannot connect to the country club system. So, those are my questions. And then, I did, I do have a question, because it has been brought up, that maybe a, a solution, because I, I agree, we need to be putting back the 15,000 trees that we've lost or were damaged. And not all of it on public land. But a suggestion has been to create an adopt-a-tree program, where somebody in the community can specifically adopt a tree, and then they become responsible. It's not going to put back 15,000 at once. But they would then be responsible themselves for the irrigation of that tree, until it's established on public lands. So, so those are my questions.
Councilmember Chambers.
I don't have questions. I have comments.
Well, this is questions.
This is questions. We had a motion, and a second, so it's discussion.
Yep. Oh, you're right. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay. So, being a golfer and being there all the time, and I hear the discussions of the club, I couldn't, can't support your motion now. There's no way to plant trees until the dead and dying trees, which are many on the course, are taken care of. And this is something I brought up before. We have a tree survey being done in our city, of city lands. It's not being done on the golf course. I think that would probably be the first step to do, is have a survey done. But the club has done that, and it's done that with our city arborist many times. They know which trees need to come out, and that's a more danger to the public than planting new trees. It would also open up areas to plant the new trees. So, but it's a process. And I know the mayor and city manager have been meeting with the executives of the golf course very regularly, and they've been talking about this topic. And the groundskeeper Rodney is well aware of what's going on. So, I can't support that motion. I fully support trees going in the golf course. I fully support trees coming out of the golf course, because that's a danger to our public. But we don't have anything in place right now to do that, and I think we need to work on that. So, that's why I can't support your motion tonight. And will not support any other motion tonight, in my opinion, for me.
Vice Mayor.
Yes. First of all, we do have, we do have an existing process within the tree ordinance that allows for the removal of the, of the dead and dying trees on the court, the public course. We did that three years ago, or maybe even longer than that. So, we do have that process. I also cannot support the, this, this motion tonight, because we don't know where we're going to, what we could put, and to, 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 to try and establish something without golf course input, where we're going to hit the water. It's going to come out of, it's going to come out of our city system, which is now going to become a budgetary item, which is going to be going into the future. Because as, as Councilmember Fernandez said, we cannot touch the wells. They are probably barely under capacity now, and that'll trigger a repayment back to SWIFTMUD. So, I was involved with that tri-party agreement, and I know exactly. They have to report on a regular basis where they stand, and it would, they just don't have, they don't have the, the capacity within their pumping. So, it's going to have to become a city. If the city's going to pay for that, it's going to become a, a drain on the, the water usage throughout the city. So, I, I too want to see the, the tree survey when it comes back. We can't put 15,000 trees on, on the golf course. I know that's not the intention, but we, we, we can't stuff the, the fix onto, onto that public property. So, I, I still, and I thought we were, we were, we were waiting on the tree survey to come back. I think it was relatively imminent that it would be done and, and reported back to us. At that point, then we can utilize the, the monies that are, that are sitting there in, in that fund to help in other, other public, public parcels within, within the city. So, at this point, I can't support that, that motion, without an awful lot more research and, and information that's got to come, come forward for us to work with.
Just one clarification.
Yeah.
The tree fund money cannot be used to remove dead and dying trees. That's, that's our operating money. The tree fund money can be used for the replanting.
We, we did
We, we changed that, man.
Huh?
We changed that.
We changed that ordinance.
Now, it does, the third thing does say the removal of sick, dying, infested, dangerous trees.
We changed that a few years ago. Yeah.
Councilmember Kravitz.
Okay. So, taking on all the feedback here, it seems to me that a minimum viable motion would be, first of all, include the golf course in the tree survey, because that is currently not the case. So, waiting for the tree survey with respect to the golf course doesn't seem like it makes any sense. Include it in the tree survey, or do some sort of survey, if that's reasonable, for whatever reason that might be required. I don't know why it matters, but that's fine. Let's say we include that. Great. Next step, remove the dead trees. If we need to specifically appropriate money from the tree fund and approach the golf course to do that, move that ball along. Do something. Instead of just standing here and saying, "We can't do this because of SWIFTMUD. We can't do this because of the other thing." There are things that can be done to get trees into the golf course. And again, I'm not saying that we want to make it difficult for anyone playing golf. My attention has always been, as it is right now, even though I didn't state it in the motion, I have said this previously, on the city right-of-way, the area along the road. Because that is what people see. That's where they get the most enjoyment out of it. And it's easiest for our staff, at the appropriate time, to do maintenance on those trees, if that's needed. So, including the golf course in some sort of tree survey, going out, working with the golf course at all phases, has always been my position, to identify where they would like to have trees, removing the dead trees, if so required, replacing them with nice new trees. And if there are areas where they need irrigation, there are ways to devise irrigation solutions that won't rely on pumps, or maybe there are other things we can do, other than tapping into the wells that are supposedly a problem. I can't imagine that the city of Temple Terrace is not allowed to irrigate its own right-of-way. If we have right-of-way, I'm sure that there is a provision somehow, that our talented staff can discover, that will allow us to irrigate some kind of landscaping in this right-of-way. Now, in a year, there's going to be an election. And people really are focused on this issue, and they like the trees in Temple Terrace. And they know, and they see that the trees are coming out. So, eventually, this dam will break. So, I can promise everyone up here that. And I'm very disappointed that every time I bring this topic up, the outcome is the same. No trees planted. This has to change. So, I think if we have a minimum viable motion up here, it would be, look at the golf course objectively. Work with them to include them in a survey of trees of some kind. Figure out how much space there is for trees. If there's space that's blocked by dead trees, remove them. Hire contractors from outside of the city, if our staff don't have capacity. There's no reason not to do that. We have over a million dollars in the tree fund, and it only keeps going up. And the third thing we can do is try and figure out some kind of irrigation solution without going through SWIFTMUD. There has to be a way to irrigate the right-of-ways in Temple Terrace, without causing a problem. I can't imagine that there's no water anywhere in the city of Temple Terrace that we can use to irrigate a tree that we put into a right-of-way that abuts the golf course. That would be absurd. And I can't believe that I live in a first-world country where that isn't possible. So, anyone wish to comment?
Just procedurally, we have a motion that's on the floor.
And we're discussing it, yes. Which is why I just invited anyone who would like to, to opine on the topic.
Cool. Okay. Thanks for the clerk.
I yield the floor.
Okay, Councilmember.
I can, do you want me to opine, or just, I can be done?
Opine away.
I'm going to opine away. So, what you're saying, I don't like being preached to, which I just did, but that's fine. We've been fighting, not fighting, but advocating trees on the golf course way before you were elected, probably way before you moved in. And that's fine. I don't disagree with what you're saying. I'm just saying, in your motion tonight, the way you made it, you didn't make anything about irrigation, other than put in irrigation. There's things that have to be studied. I don't disagree with that. And I, to get it started, I think, at our last goal-setting, I wanted golf course stuff put in, golf course trees put in. Staff has got projects. They are working on it. I know the mayor's been talking to the golf course. I don't disagree with anything you said. I disagree with the tone and the accusation that we're not doing anything. The club's working with the, the city on that. So, all I'm saying is, fine, I'm not supporting the motion that the mayor's going to call for the vote.
I have a comment, if I may be recognized to respond to that.
Councilmember Kravitz.
So, first of all, the city is not doing anything with the golf course, because from my understanding, there has never been a successful council vote up here to do that. So, whatever the mayor may or may not be doing behind the scenes is without authority, because he has not been authorized by this body to engage in explicit discussions with the golf course, which is something that has been held against me on many occasions, including at the beginning of this meeting, when the mayor himself pointed out that my innocent question to the chairwoman of the Centennial Committee did not reflect an opinion of council, and that she should not begin thinking about any sort of celebrations to host downtown. I have also made motions on this topic repeatedly in the past, which have been voted down. And I have not seen anyone else make a motion regarding this topic, other than the motions that I have made. And so, from my perspective, my point is certainly not to criticize the work that anyone else here has done. And it's also not to think about what may have, may not have happened before I moved here, or before I was elected, or any of those other things. What I'm looking at is the problem that is right in front of me, and I'm trying to figure out how to address it. And the problem that we have is that we lost 15,000 trees in our last hurricane season. Everyone can see that there are fewer trees in Temple Terrace. And I'm sorry if I have a preachy tone, but at some point, a person's patience is gradually exhausted. And we've gotten to a point where I am now making this motion for, I believe, the third time, to try and get any kind of traction into this topic, which is, as I've said, a top-three topic for our electorate. And all I am seeing is people shaking their heads. It is not my job, your job, or anyone's job up here, to come up with the implementation details. We are a legislative body, not the executive. And every time I make this motion, this topic comes up, and it is held against me that I have not thought through every detail. That is not my role. My role is to give that to staff, so that they can execute on the decision that we make. And now, I yield my time.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion fails. I guess.
That'll be a 4-0 vote, man.
Well, that's a 5-1, or a 4-1. Okay. Other new business or board reports? Yes, Vice Mayor.
For several months, as, this is my responsibility, since the, the Hart representative to the Hart Board, I would like to read a statement into the record regarding the changes that are going on within Hart. Since the introduction of proposed legislation regarding the future of public transportation governance in Hillsborough County, Hart Board Chair, Councilmember Louis Vier, and CEO Scott Drainville have active, have been actively engaged in an ongoing dialogue about both the structure, structural funding challenges faced by the agency, and the opportunities to strengthen service delivery within Hart's current framework, to ensure the best outcomes for the customers, community taxpayers, and Hart employees. As part of this effort, in the coming months, Hart will pause on active pursuit of seeking approval from its three-member jurisdictions that would authorize revisions to the Hart Charter. These proposed revisions would include the Hart Board of Direct Board composition based on population growth, the Hart Board membership involved, membership involvement in various committees, and the maximum ad valorem tax that can be levied, based on full valuation of real property, and provide the opportunity to work with state and local affected, elected officials towards a sustainable solution that best serves our community and employees, keeping the focus on meeting the mobility needs of the community. Hart remains committed to the transparency, accountability, and collaboration, and will continue to keep, to keep the public informed of these conversations moving forward. I read in this to record, so that everybody realizes and understands why we have not gone forward with bringing out presentations to the council for discussing and approving the, or not approving, the charter revisions that were brought forth late in spring and early summer. That's just what we're going to stage. Because I know I've been kind of, sort of, well, Scott, the CEO's going to come out, and I felt I owed it to the, to council to, at least with the official position of Hart is at this moment in time. So.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The question, Vice Mayor, on this, Councilmember Kravitz.
So, my understanding is, you will be bringing a presentation to this body?
Subdate, maybe.
And then, at that point, prior to doing so, you will solicit this body for a motion and a positive vote to have that presentation, because that has been the standard that has now been set?
I will not be making a presentation. No. Hart will be making a presentation. And being, we are members of And being, we are members of the legis, we are one of the legislative members, or members of the, of the entity, they can, they would be able to request the ability to make the presentation.
Oh, interesting. So, an outside body can put this on the agenda through you?
Pardon me?
An outside body can place this item on the agenda through you?
I can requ, we can request it, I guess. They'll be, I won't be making the request. They will be making the request, because I will be voting on it. So, I will not be involved with that at all.
You will not be presenting?
No, I will not be presenting.
Oh, good, thank you, because I heard a different thing when I first asked the question. That's all, that's all my questions, thank you very much.
Any questions for Vice Mayor?
No.
Thank you. Are there other new business or board reports?
I have.
Yes.
For the city manager. Are you, is someone gonna respond back to the gentleman about naming Enigma Plaza? That we don't have any control over that? Someone will reach out to him?
I would hope that he left an address or something.
He, he did.
Correspond with him?
Yeah, I checked, oh, he was here.
Okay, that's all.
We'll be getting that.
Yeah. Yes, Councilmember Fernandez?
So, I, you, you can tell me if you want me to do this during the city manager's report. I just, I do want to ask about a plan or a process for re-treating the public spaces, so.
If you want, nobody asked me.
Well, that was one of my questions before.
Yeah, nobody asked. So, within a month ago, at our last meeting with the Country Club, which this body did authorize us to have these monthly meetings with them, probably before Councilmember Kravitz was on it, so he might not be aware of that. But, we had, we don't make, like, I don't speak for the city and commit things. I mean, we bring them back. An example of something we brought back was, the city manager asking for council's approval for us to use our public work crews to help along the curb lines.
Right.
Even though their lease says that they're supposed to, we wanted to freshen it up, because that's the parts that, so, the council, it's not like we're back in a smoky room making commitments for the city, but, so, the trees. I heard that. So, the, the trees. We had a discussion with them, we told them about the tree survey, which they, of course, knew. They're not included in the tree survey, which they also, of course, knew. We talked to them about our goal to, you know, we have this money, we want to replant. At one point, they were under the impression, this is where the email, that it was a third-hand report to Councilmember Kravitz, that they were working with the mayor to replant trees. Well, that was not the case, that was never true. But again, nobody asked me. What happened was, Mr. Kapaz, the president, told the general manager that he had a discussion with the city manager and I, and she took that to say they were working with us to plant trees, which was a little more than what we were doing. They were under the impression at one point that they, they needed to buy these trees, and they were even suggested by a council member that they, at least what they told me, was that the council member suggested they partner with the, some foundations, a national organization that would maybe give them a grant to purchase the trees. And I did tell Mr. Kapaz, "You don't need to do that. We have a tree fund that's very robust, and it is city property. We would be happy to provide you with trees. You don't need to go buy and get a grant to buy the trees. We'll, we'll provide you with the trees." And I don't think that was an overstep, because it's city property, and we do that for everybody. So, it's not like I committed to, I mean, if you want a tree in your yard, you could get one too. So, that was taken and reported back, as they were working with us to identify locations to plant trees, which was never the case. So, recently, we talked to them about the tree survey, we talked, they talked to us about the need to remove some dead and dying and diseased trees. Their lease clearly requires them to pay for the removal of dead and dying trees and the disposal of the waste. We, a couple of years ago, and I always misunderstood what we did, but you were right. A couple of years ago, the city council approved revisions to the tree ordinance that allowed us to use tree fund money to help them. But we were very clear that we did not want to change the lease and take over responsibility for the entire golf course tree canopy. That was still their responsibility. So, at the time, they paid to cut those trees down, and the city paid to dispose of the waste. We were still, I mean, I, I can't commit to this, and I don't even think Carlos can, without coming back to council and saying, "Look, this is what we want to do." But we talked to them recently, about, okay, let us know how many of these trees need to come down, about how much stuff we're talking about, where they are, and we need you to put this on a map with a replanting schedule also, so that we know what's coming out, where, where can trees go back in. They have this, it's just old. It hasn't been updated since, I don't, you remember, 2020?
2022.
21, 22, something like, they have this document already, it's just outdated, because they've already done a lot of the work. So, we asked them to refresh this with the current conditions, and then we would talk about what commitment the city could make towards the removal of these trees, and what their replanting plan would be. Where would these trees be located, what are the species and all that? So, that's where we left it. That's only been, I don't even think it's been a month ago since our last meeting, so that information is very fresh. We're not overstepping, I don't, I don't do that. When we have this information, and it comes time for the city to commit to what we are willing to do and what we're not, that's a council decision, just like it has been in the past. And it will be a council decision in the future.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I couldn't support the motion, because it, part of the motion was that the funding would be used for irrigation, which is not allowed. So, but I would like to ask, if, with the Country Club not part of the tree survey, and I understand that's kind of a quasi, "We own it, but they have a lease", I guess what I'd like to see is, how, how can we create a comprehensive replanting and maintenance plan for the trees that exist already on our public land, which I think is going to come out of the tree survey? But also, how can we create a plan to work with the Country Club to re-tree, well, to un-tree the damaged ones, and to re-tree for the existing ones in, as part of this plan, creating a way that those trees can be irrigated, at least until they're established? And I know it's not, I, I know that we have irrigation in parts of the city. However, knowing exactly where Country Club rough is, and knowing that there might not be any irrigation near it, that that would be, it could be very expensive to run permanent irrigation, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't know. But what I'm asking is if it's possible that we can talk about creating a plan that actually has actionable items, and then, that, that plan is, has, as it moves forward, that we have a process for re-treating as we lose them? Because it's not just the storm. We lost, you know, a, a very good number of trees in those two storms. But if you look around, a lot of our oak trees are getting older. So, even without a storm, we're going to start losing a lot of our larger oak trees, just because of their age. And, you know, I, I would like to ask that we keep, that we keep that in our mind as we're creating this plan, to main sure, make sure that we're maintaining our tree canopy. We're having to put a lot back now, but, but to maintain it, that we're replanting as trees are getting older, and, and maybe all of this is gonna come out of the tree survey, and then that's, through that, we're going to be able to create a plan. But the golf course is not part of the tree survey, and it's an extensive part of the green space in the city of Temple Terrace. So, I, I mean, I guess that's what I would ask. I don't have anything at all against the proposal that was made, except I know we can't use those funds for that purpose.
Well, I, I think it's probably best directed at the city manager. But I will say that, I mean, you voted for this too. When we had discussion about funding the tree survey, the whole purpose of the tree survey was to create a canopy master plan.
That's, which is what I hope, yes.
Which is what you're talking about. But we, we funded that last year. I mean, so this is not a new road that we're going down. This is, the whole purpose of the survey that's underway now was to do exactly what you're talking about doing. Yeah, the golf course property wasn't included in it. But, I mean, I don't think it would be that hard to take the survey, the data we get, and incorporate the golf. But anyway, that's probably city manager.
And that, but that's just my request, is that, as we move forward, that we create basically some sort of consistent, continuous process for evaluation, maintenance, and replacement, and that's it.
Other new business or board reports? Okay, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Since we're talking about trees, and it's been referenced here this evening, the tree study consultant biotech is, as part of their contract, they are hosting a public engagement meeting on Monday, November 3rd. It'll be at Lightfoot, doors open at 5:30, the presentation will be at 6:00. There'll be Q and A time after the presentation. This is to share their results thus far, and to talk about what still remains to be done and collect community input for the urban forest management plan that, that you've all discussed. Also, wanted to let the council know that the FDOT is participating in the America 250 Initiative, which is in honor of the 250th anniversary of the, of the country next year. And as part of that, they are, in our community, they have contracted with an electrician to replace the in-ground lights at the pergolas, at the entrance to the city by the tower on 56th Street, with red, white, and blue uplighting. So, they're working on that right now. I imagine within the next days or week or so, you'll, you might see that. So, that'll be a nice touch, as folks enter the southern gateway. Also, wanted to take the opportunity to update the council on several items. Just let you know that we're working on them, and when they're gonna be expected before you. Council has asked about a social media policy for council members. We expect to present that to you on, at the November 4th agenda. At the last CRA meeting, the CRA board asked us to look at what the process would be to amend the borders of the CRA. Mr. Polly will be prepared to discuss that at the next CRA meeting on November 18th. We're also still working with the would-be buyers for the city's property in the CRA. We, we've retained outside legal counsel, and through outside legal counsel, we also retain the services of a business consultancy, which has looked at the financials for the company. They've got some input already that we're gonna be sharing with the, the would-be buyers this week, this week or early next week, actually, to see how they respond to that. And then, we're gonna bring that information back to you as soon as we, we can. As was mentioned earlier, the Riverside Park workshop, we were unable to come up with a date that where all the council members could attend. I will ask Ms. Barlow to try again, to see if plans may have changed perhaps, and we may find a, a date and time that'll work. And then, the last thing, I would ask the council's indulgence to have Mr. Langfeld come up and talk about the Fall Festival.
Good evening, Mr. Langfeld.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. I come tonight dressed in my Halloween costume as a dedicated city employee to talk about Fall Festival, which is coming up this Saturday, October 25th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the field behind the family complex. This is an event that is free to the public. We do ask that if you are able to bring a donation of a non-perishable food item for the Temple Terrace Elementary School Food Bank. Activities that evening will include trunk-or-treat, a hayride, the creepy petting zoo, which if you all like to pet tarantulas and lizards and have at it, that's, I prefer bunnies and goats, but anyway. The mysterious maze is always a big hit, a DJ and dancing, carnival games, as well as food trucks will be available. The event will culminate with a costume contest at 8:00 PM, with great prizes for age groups and a family category. I want to extend special thanks to the citizens, civic groups, and local businesses that participate and make the trunk-or-treat portion of this event a possible, dedicating a Saturday night, and the expense of buying a tremendous amount of candy that gets given out that night. So, special thanks to those groups. Also, want to thank city departments, including fire, public works, and the police department, as well as the leisure services department, for all of their efforts in making this event go off without a hitch. Fall Festival is one of our most well-attended and, and most dynamic events that we do every year, and I hope to see all of you out there that evening. Thank you.
Questions? Vice Mayor?
No, I have a question for, for Mr. B.
Okay, any questions for, he's up?
No.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
The gentleman that was here earlier regarded the garage issue. Was I missing, I was, he was looking, he had a zoning issue that he needed changed? Does he, he needs to go through the Board of Adjustment for that, doesn't he? Do you know what happened?
Yes, we, I know what happened. So, we, I've met with Mr. Harris's property, as has a couple of our staff as well, to discuss this. What he has is, he, the, he has a mid-century modern type of home, and there is a detached garage, which is in the side yard. When that garage was built, we understand that garage was built prior to Mr. Harris's ownership in 1986, about three months before the ordinance was changed, which no longer allowed detached structures in side yards, accessory structures, excuse me, in side yards. So, it's a non-conforming, it's a legal non-conforming use, but you can't expand illegal non-conforming use. So, you can't go to a Board of Adjustment to provide relief to expand illegal non-conforming use. You can't do that. So, so, his only option, and we've discussed this extensively with him, and he, he would also have another variance on top of that, even if he could expand the legal non-conforming use, because he wants to expand the garage further into the side yard, and it'll be encroaching into the side yard setback. So, he'd have to have a request of variance for that, which, that variance he could get if, if the Board of Adjustment found it, you know, justified. So, we believe his only solution now to pursue what he'd like to do legally would be for the council to change the zoning. We've had requests in the past for certain uses in the side yard, like pools, or pool enclosures is one thing. Buildings in the side yard is not something that we typically get a lot of requests for. The council, back in 1986, felt purposely they wanted to avoid doing that. They, they wrote it out of the ordinance. Not to say that this council is bound by that, but I can't swear to you that there's a lot of ground swell for us to change the ordinance for that. Now, if council tells us differently, we'll consider that, but that's not what we've heard so far, except for Mr. Harris, obviously, in his situation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. B.
That, that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. B?
I do have one question.
Yes, Councilmember Fernandez?
Regarding the, about potential for another city event that would take part, it would take place in the downtown area, the open space, is that something that you think that we would have the ability? Like, we're, we're going, we've already expended all the funds for the centennial celebration, but is that something that would be possible based on our, I mean, I'm always looking for ways to increase activity at that space, but is that something that would be possible for us based on the lease agreements of the current businesses, that something could be put there? If, and would the Centennial Committee be able to even be still in existence based on their timeframe of existence to plan something that would probably go past January 2026? Or into?
Okay. All right, so I, I think you've actually, I say you, excuse me, the city attorney, I believe, has looked at restrictions, and I believe we could do a type of a festival, or is this sort of public activity on the space, like, on a temporary basis? Is that?
Right, yeah. I didn't see anything out there that would prevent it yet. I mean, I've looked at, there was some leases out there, the REO, and I don't think that they restrict our use of that.
Okay, so, putting that aside, then, I don't know if the Centennial Committee would be the appropriate body, if you're talking about beyond the end of this year, to, to do that. I mean, if, if the council wishes us to pursue some sort of a special event or something like that, I can gladly have the conversation with the leisure services department. And we can, and there may be members of the Centennial Committee that may want to participate in something like that. We can, we can look at that, and, you know, if that's something the council would like us to pursue, we can figure out how we would budget for something like that. There may be dollars already programmed that perhaps we could shift from things to different things. We, I don't know, without having that conversation with, with the staff. But I can come back to you. If that's the wish of council, then pursue that.
I mean, I, I, this is what I know from many years of event planning. I think it's physically impossible, right now, to plan an event in that space that would happen before the end of, before December 31st. And knowing that we have Fall Festival as one big city event, and then we've got Winter Wonderland as another big city event, I just don't, I don't think the Centennial Committee themselves would be able to have an event planned to orchestrate that prior to 12/31, and then that would push them into the 2026, which I, I don't think that they're... and then that would push them into the 2026, which I don't think that their organization, their mandate was to exist past that. But, so I just, I just wanted to ask about that. But, I mean, I would certainly be interested in anything the city might be able to do with an activity or even another group that wants to plan an event that, you know, however we can help facilitate that activity, that space being activated, you know? I would be happy if anybody has any ideas, basically. But I didn't think that the Centennial Group could move past 2020, or basically the end of the year. So that's just a question then.
Okay.
That's it.
Well, we can look at some of that, and at least have a conversation with the staff and see if there's, you know, traction of that, if that's all right with the rest of them.
Well, sure, except we've already asked the Fernandez question answered three times. Mr. Langfeld gave a presentation on why he didn't think it was feasible, well, not feasible, not beneficial, advantageous, to use that property for gatherings, because it's been brought up three times before, and he talked about, I can't even remember the exact things. It was the porta-potties and the power and the generators, there's no power out there, there's no, I mean, he's already walked us through this, because this came up, this is at least the third or fourth time. So, I mean, if we want you to go through the exercise again, I guess, but, I mean, I was happy with, well, not happy, I was disappointed, because it would have been a cool idea, but I don't, I don't think the answer's going to be any different than it's been in the past, but it's up to council.
I mean, I'm not necessarily looking for an answer right now, but just consideration.
Think about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be cool to have something down there. We've always thought that. But we've been explained why it's not a good idea several times, so.
I think Councilmember Kravitz.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kravitz.
I think it depends on the scope of the event and also on how it's organized and arranged, and depending on what you actually did in that space, it might require more or less time and planning and investment. I've always come back to the idea of food trucks because they have their own power source. They are very popular, and they could use that space with relatively easy improvisation. When it comes to electricity, I don't know how I can really respond to that, but every time I walk past there, which is probably multiple times a week, I see electrical outlets at that location lining the side of the property. And so I find it a little difficult to believe that there is no electricity out there. But even if there were not, because food trucks operate without needing a source of electricity, it would not be an issue. When it comes to the porta-potties, I know I'm starting to repeat myself because I've said this so many times in this room, when it comes to the porta-potties, I imagine it is easy to make an arrangement with the businesses in the area, because they also have an interest in bringing in large numbers of people. And so it's quite possible that they will be perfectly happy to allow people to use the bathrooms. For one, I know that Starbucks has a corporate policy of not denying bathroom use to anyone, so in a worst-case scenario, everyone at this event can go to the Starbucks. But I'm obviously not seriously encouraging that, just for the record. Now, when it comes to the other point, which is, I think, the overarching strategic direction that we're going with the Centennial Year, even though it's very late in it, and perhaps I should have more aggressively tried to steer this earlier in my term, we will complete this year without having a single event in downtown. And so I think that sends a really awful message about downtown, and it's not what people here expect. They want downtown to succeed. I think we should have had some kind of an event in downtown. I've brought it up repeatedly. It never gained any traction here, unfortunately. I have tried. I have really, really tried, but everything, every time I bring it up, it's no for a million different reasons, none of which really make any sense to me as someone who has done events before. I've organized conferences in Germany where I've had people coming from multiple countries, and we put it all together in a matter of weeks. It can be done, even if it's necessary perhaps to hire outside expertise. I think it would be fine, and I think that we can find food trucks, and we might even make money on it. That's the thing. Food trucks might pay us, if we organize it properly, to be in that space and sell their food to people if we advertise it. So I really think it just depends on looking at it from a fresh perspective, trying something a little bit different from what we might have already done, and just approaching it with more of a minimalist attitude. You don't have to have a ton of signs and a bunch of other stuff to have a good time. You can have a good time with very few things, and it can be great, but you have to try. I yield the floor.
All right, council, we want to go home. What do you want to do here? Do we want another event in the downtown? Do we want to task them with this or not? So we got to get out of here.
I would like an event in the downtown, but I don't necessarily expect that it could be done before 1231.
So what does, tell us what you want. That doesn't tell us what you want.
I love the food truck idea, but I don't, I mean, I don't want to task staff or the Centennial Committee, just me saying, let's do this, but I think that we do need to do something in that area.
Okay, you can't do it without tasking somebody to do this.
I mean, on my own.
Hire an outside firm. Let's appropriate some money from the TIF funds to get a consultant to do this. If we don't have the resources internally, have someone outside, organize a small food truck event. I guarantee you, there are companies that organize food truck events. There are probably 500 of them in Hillsborough County. Hire one of them, have some food trucks, have a good time.
Are we really going to give directions to go out and find a consultant company?
No.
To come in and plan a public event for, I mean, really? This is where we are?
Yes, nothing can be done.
I think staff has heard this, and they can, city manager already said they're going to talk to staff and leisure services. Let's see what they come up with.
Okay.
Leisure services, if I may, leisure services have been planning stuff for next year all along, and they're just not starting it now.
I know, I'm just cautious about giving them another.
Well, I know, that's my point.
Oh, yeah.
That's my point. If there's something they can do, they can do it. If they can't, they can't. You know, there's only so much you can do.
Well, okay. Is that good, Mr. B? You can talk to.
I would like to make a motion that we ask leisure services staff to think about having a downtown event before the end.
I think we just did that.
Was that a motion? I didn't hear.
Doesn't matter, doesn't need.
We don't need a motion to give work.
Oh, wow. That's exciting. Now we don't need rules?
Oh, my gosh. Make it stop, please. Mr. B, are you done? Good. City manager, city attorneys report.
Actually have two things, quick. First, back in 2023, the city was having some issues with the fountain shops with some reoccurring code violations on that property. There was trash debris in the plaza and the parking, there was dumpster areas filled with trash, there was a trash compactor, there was inoperable, the irrigation was inoperable, the substant, there was substandard landscape materials, dead palm trees and other vegetation, no fire alarm. These cases were taken to the code enforcement board, the orders were entered, fines were imposed, and it became apparent after a period of time that the code board process wasn't working. So we took the fountain shops to court to try and correct those violations. That was successful. But in the meantime, we had the fines that had accrued until the point that all the violations got complied, while the fountain shops is sold, and as a result, they paid off the liens of $161,450. And second, I'd like to introduce formally to the city council, the deputy city attorney, who has been with us for a couple, for a month now. She keeps coming back, so I think that's a good sign, Nicole Donnell.
Welcome.
Hi, welcome.
Anything else? Any other business?
I'm sorry, I never did hear the name of the shops. It was, the background noise was.
The fountain shop.
Fountain shops, okay, I'm sorry. I'm, old ears.
Well, yeah, the big, I forgot to mention that the fountain itself did not work either.
Okay, you're good. There is no other business to come before the council. We will stand adjourned.
Fountain doesn't work today either.
It didn't?
No.